We ready?
Yeah. I'm ready.
We got enough. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We do. Me come to order, please. Roll call. Please. Record it. Thank you. Announcement, staff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple real quick. First of all, and you have it within your meeting packet, we have what could theoretically be our last Triune Special Area Public Involvement Meeting coming up this coming Tuesday night, August 14th at 6:30 at the Triune Methodist Church. So, any of y'all want to come down and visit, see how the process is progressing, we'd be appreciative. Secondly, we have one withdrawal. That'd be item 24, which would be amendment to Article 23 of the Williams County Zoning Ordinance regarding rules of measurement of sound standards. And finally, we do have a staff has a request for a non-agenda item. This has to do with the resolution that we're trying to get to the County Commission for the September meeting. We meet after the County Commission meets in September, so we wouldn't be able to get that in there in a timely manner. Other than that, that's all I might have.
Explain the non-agenda item and I'll see if they permit.
Oh, I beg your pardon. Non-agenda item because, you know, very recently, we passed, we received funding for a comprehensive plan update. As a result of some conversation back and forth with several of the county commissioners, we went and discussed it with the mayor and our consultant and decided for $30,000 more, we would be able to get a little better handle on cost of future services, primarily that of transportation. So, we would like to go on and take that forward with y'all's endorsement.
Without exception, I'll put that in as our last item. Does anyone object? Anyone? Fine, it's the last agenda item. Consideration of the minutes of July 12, 2018. Changes, corrections? Is there a second?
Mr. Richter.
Did I hear?
Yes, Mr. Richter.
I'm sorry. Prepare to vote. Vote now. Motion carries, thank you. Consideration of consent agenda. Any commissioner wishing to pull an item for separate discussion, please say so now, otherwise we will take it as a whole. Anyone? Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with item 3, Cartwright Close. Maintenance bond for roads drainage erosion control, $275,000. Recommendation extended current amount for a period of one year. Item 4, Dumb Lane. Maintenance bond for roads drainage erosion control, $175,000. Recommendation extended current amount for a period of one year. Item 5, Falls Grove. Maintenance bond for wastewater collection system, $70,940. Recommendation extended current amount for a period of one year. Item 6, Falls Grove. Section 3, Maintenance Bond for Roads Drainage Erosion Control, $250,000. Recommendation extended current amount for a period of one year. Item 7, Farms at Clovercroft. Section 1, Maintenance Bond for Wastewater Collection System, $34,800. Recommendation, release the bond. Item 8, Farms at Clovercroft. Section 1, Maintenance Bond for Roads Drainage Erosion Control, $240,000. Recommendation extended current amount for a period of one year. Item 9, Kings Chapel. Section 3A, Maintenance Bond for Roads Drainage Erosion Control, $126,000. Recommendation, release the bond. Item 10, Kings Chapel. Section 3C, Performance Bond for Wastewater Collection System, $12,500. Recommendation extended current amount for a period of six months. Item 11, Lookaway Farms. Section 1, Maintenance, beg your pardon, Performance Bond for Wastewater Collection System, $282,000. Recommendation extended current amount for a period of six months. Item 12, New Approach School of Jewelry Arts. Maintenance Bond for Landscaping, $6,180. Recommendation, release the bond. Item 13, Silverstream Farms. Section 4G, Maintenance Bond for Water, $13,500. Recommendation, release the bond. Item 15, Silverstream Farms. Section 4G, Maintenance Bond for Roads Drainage Erosion Control, $50,000. Recommendation extended current amount for a period of one year. Item 15, Temple Hill. Section 16, Phase C. Maintenance Bond for Roads Drainage Erosion Control, $190,000. Recommendation extended current amount for a period of one year. Item 16, The Grove. Section 2, Maintenance Bond for Wastewater Collection System, $136,200. Recommendation, release the bond. Going now to final plats under item, beginning with item 30. Final plat review for Burning Tree Farms. Section 2, Containing eight lots and 9.46 acres located off Nolansville Road in the 5th Voting District. Staff recommends approval with the following conditions. 1, Posting a Performance Bond in the amount of $198,000 for Roads Drainage Erosion Control. 2, Posting a Performance Bond in the amount of $16,016 for landscaping improvements. 3, Execution of Stormwater Agreement and Submission of Operation and Maintenance Plan for Stormwater Improvements. And 4, That the applicant provides two copies of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the plat. And item 32. Final plat review for Clovercroft Reserve Subdivision. Section 2, Containing 32 lots and 117.86 acres located off Clovercroft Road in the 4th Voting District. Staff recommends approval with the following conditions. 1, Posting a Performance Bond in the amount of $771,000 for Roads Drainage Erosion Control. Item 2, The Posting of Performance Bond in the amount of $12,800 for wastewater collection. 3, The Posting of Performance Bond in the amount of $97,500 for water improvements as specified by Nolansville College Grove Utility. 4, The Posting of a Performance Bond in the amount of $15,400 for landscaping improvements. 5, The Execution of Stormwater Maintenance and Submission of an Operation and Maintenance Plan for Stormwater Improvements. And 6, That the applicant provides two copies of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the plat.
Thank you, sir. Any comments on consent? Questions? Motion made and seconded. Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. Motion carries, thank you. Under old business, agenda item 17, Final Plat Review for McDonnell Mingus. Large Lot Easement Subdivision, Containing three lots on 45.79 acres located off Arno Alisona Road in the 2nd Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject property is approximately 46 acres in size and is located off Arno Alisona Road, approximately one-half mile east of Pultite Hill Road. The applicant is requesting approval of a large lot easement subdivision in order to create three lots off a new ingress egress utility easement. The applicant has requested that action on this item be deferred until the September 2018 meeting. Staff concurs with this request.
Motion to defer. Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. Oops. Motion carries, thank you. Excuse me. Continuing under old business, agenda item 18. Final plat review for McDaniel Estates. Section 1, Containing 40 lots on 322.76 acres located off of McDaniel Road in the 5th Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A preliminary plat for this development was approved at the October 2017 meeting. The applicant is now requesting final plat approval for the first section of the development, which consists of 40 lots, the wastewater treatment and disposal system, and approximately 291 acres of open space. As the required roadway improvements recommended by the county's traffic consultant are to be completed prior to the submittal of the final plat containing the 87th lot, as this final plat only contains 40 lots, off-site improvements are not required in conjunction with this section. Construction of the pedestrian bridge across the Harper River accessing the open space has been completed. Final plat is consistent in layout with that depicted on the approved preliminary plat. Staff recommends approval of the final plat with the following stipulations. Number 1, The approved HOA documents shall be concurrently recorded with the recording of the final plat. Number 2, Prior to submittal of the final plat containing the 87th lot, all off-site improvements as specified in the traffic impact analysis review from the county's traffic consultant must be completed in accordance with the approved plans. The developer shall be responsible for acquiring any additional rights of way and/or construction easements in order to complete the required improvements. Number 3, Posting of a Performance Bond in the amount of $1,102,000 for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control. Number 4, Posting of a Performance Bond in the amount of $255,000 for water improvements as specified by Millcroft and Utility District. Number 5, Posting of a Performance Bond in the amount of $169,000 for the wastewater collection system. Number 6, Posting of a Performance Bond in the amount of $89,900 for landscaping improvements. Number 7, Execution of a Stormwater Maintenance Agreement and Submission of an Operation and Maintenance Plan for Stormwater Improvements. And number 8, Submission of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the plat.
Thank you, sir. Questions of staff? Comments? Motion made and seconded. Prepare to vote, please. Record it. Motion carries, thank you. Agenda item 18, excuse me, 19. Final plat review for Swanson's Ridge Subdivision, Containing 21 lots on 49.08 acres located off of Kittrell Road in the 9th Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A preliminary plat for this development was approved in August of 2017. The applicant is now requesting final plat approval for Section 1 of the development, which contains 21 lots and approximately 16 and a half acres of open space. The applicant has requested action on this item be deferred until the September 2018 meeting. Staff concurs with this request.
Questions of staff? Motion made and seconded. Prepare to vote. Motion carries, thank you. Agenda item 20.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am?
I am recusing myself of this agenda item.
Yes, ma'am. Let the record so reflect. Agenda item 20. Preliminary plat review for Terra Vista Subdivision, Phase 1, Containing 29 lots on 30 acres located off Long Lane in the 12th Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A concept plan for this development was approved at the May 2018 meeting. The applicant is now requesting preliminary plat approval for the first phase of the development, which consists of 29 lots, approximately 31 acres of open space, and the wastewater treatment and disposal area. The applicant has requested action on this item be deferred until the September 2018 meeting. Staff concurs with this request.
Questions of staff? Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. The motion carries, thank you. Agenda item 21. We're under the section Public Hearings. For those of you in the audience, our procedures are as follows. Staff will make a report presentation at its conclusion. We'll open for public hearing. You'll be invited to come to the podium and make your comments. And we only have one on Troubadour Club, I guess, okay? First one is the agenda item 21, Concept Plan Review. Revised for Troubadour Club, formerly Hideaway at Arrington. Containing 430 lots on 640 acres located off Cox Road in the 5th Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. An overall site plan, which is now referred to as a concept plan, for this development, which included 482 lots and an 18-hole golf course, was originally approved at the February 2008 meeting. A separate site plan for the golf course and amenity area was subsequently approved at the May 2008 meeting. Minor revisions to both the overall development plan as well as the golf course and amenity area site plan have been approved by this body over the years. The development is now under new ownership and the applicant is requesting approval of a revised concept plan for the development, which is now called Troubadour Club. The primary changes from the previously approved plan include the following. 1, Incorporating a portion of an existing parcel on the south side of Cox Road into the development. This additional land will be used as additional open space for the development and is proposed to include an irrigation pond to help maintain the golf course and open space areas within the development. 2, Incorporating a 3.43 acre parcel on the north side of Cox Road into the development in order to provide a more suitable area for the maintenance facility for the development and to aid in the reconfiguration of four lots in this area of the subdivision. And 3, Increasing lot sizes in various areas of the development, resulting in a reduction in the number of lots from 482 to 430. These changes result in a reduction in the overall number of lots and an increase in the open space within the development. As such, staff recommends approval of the revised concept plan with the same conditions of approval that were established at the February 2008 meeting.
Questions of staff? Anyone? We'll open this for public hearing at this time. Public hearing is now open and Mr. Rex McKinney signed up to speak. Mr. McKinney, you have the podium.
Thank you. My property backs up to this development on the Broadway Drive. When it was originally developed, my property backs to the number 10 range, to the number 11 range. These streams have come out of that property from the front. The original development did a poor job of maintaining that and protecting that stream. It resulted in both stream beds being full settled. My pond is full settled.
This is also the area where the retaining wall that they built collapsed. And it's still basically in the same condition it was six, seven years ago when it collapsed. All I'm asking is that, as this redevelopment is done, this is the part of the golf course that has not been touched yet, that the developer do whatever is necessary to minimize the impact of those stream beds in my pond.
Are you aware of that? Mike?
No, sir. I was not.
You said this wall fell down and it's still laid on the ground?
It was a stone, it was one of the stone retaining walls that they built. Right after it collapsed, I talked with staff here and they finally put a stop work order on it and forced them to come in and do some work in that because all we had was just mud coming off that hillside across the property. And so, they came in, they stopped them for three days. That was all they would let them work on. And so, they got it in good condition, but then that hillside now, it was basically filled. And they widened that hilltop and it's all filled and so, it was just mud for months. And they've sowed it with grass and all that, but as they go back in to redevelopment and that grass is gone and all that cover is gone, I don't want to be back in the same situation.
I understand, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir? Yes, sir?
Staff is very aware of the situation that he is talking about. And this was obviously many years ago now, actually. And so, we have a whole new set of people involved in this project. We have been on site. We know all about the wall. And we have spoke with the current engineer about that situation. So, we are aware of that and have been assured that they will take careful, pay careful attention to that and correct all of that complete area. There has been no work whatsoever in this area. There was a cul-de-sac street that was supposed to go up to the top of the hill and it has never even been constructed. So, just to let you know, staff is very aware of that situation.
Is there a detention or retention basin involved in these streams that are coming on?
There is at the bottom of this slope. Yes, sir. It's a small one.
This is the exit from those basins to his property?
I would have to look at the plans again to review that exactly. I'm not sure of the current distances.
They come out of the detention basin and come on you?
And through the streams and across the, yeah.
And it's still running mud on you?
At times.
Okay.
Now, that we were not aware of. But we will make ourselves aware of it.
That's good. Thank you, sir. Anyone? Oh, well, you didn't sign up. You can't speak, I guess. The public hearing is closed at this time. Any questions of staff? Developers here? Who is a developer? Won't you come up and see if there's any questions of your project here by members of the planning commission? And you are, sir?
My name is Tom Faust. I, German, live in the first time I've met in opportunity. Present myself as the project president for Discovery Land Company. We purchased the property, acquired the property in February of this year. And I have been on site since March, working diligently to try to figure out what the best uses of this property are for. To address the gentleman's concern, we haven't, at this point, looked at that particular situation. We have our engineer looking at what we're going to do to fix that wall, but we will take immediate action once we get into that area. Tonight, I was just going to introduce myself to you because, quite honestly, this will be one of many times that we'll be up in front of you asking for changes for the Troubadour Club. Many of you know it as Hideaway. But when we got here in February, we decided to make some changes that I think benefit not only the community but the development. So, one of the changes has been this concept plan that's in front of you tonight for the Amenity Hill area that we call the Homestead. But we are continuing to look at other areas in Phase 2, which this gentleman's property, this wall failed in. And we will take the measures accordingly to change that. Looking at overall, the next few times I'll be in front of you, we will continue to reduce density on this project to the tune of eventually about 25% from what was originally asked for. We think quality is much better than quantity out there. And you'll see me three or four times probably from this point forward. Discovery Land has been doing this for about 25 years. And I know that because I was involved with their original project in Scottsdale, Arizona, that many years ago. And at that time, my hair was still gray, but I've learned a lot since then. And I'm here now, back with Discovery in Nashville, because we believe in this project. And I think you'll see as plans come forward, as we work our way through this since February, because we have inherited something that has had its challenges over the last 10 years. We've been involved with staff, with engineering, to try to figure this out. And I will tell you that I will be here. You'll see my face as much as anybody in some of these planning commissions. So, I just wanted to assure you, I'm available and am going to be a resident of Williamson County very soon. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Don?
The only question I have, Mr. Chairman, is the additional land. It says the irrigation pond to help the golf course will be on the other side of the road. So, what I'm taking from this is they're going to pipe underneath Cox Pike? Is that correct?
I would assume so.
Okay.
Correct. Anything else? Anyone else? Comments, questions? Motion? Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? I see none. Prepare to vote. Record it. Motion carries, thank you. Continuing in the public hearings, the agenda item 22. Amendment to Article 14 of the Williams County Zoning Ordinance regarding requirements for open space strips related to conservation subdivisions.
Thank you. Over the past couple of months, the planning commission and staff have been discussing various concerns that have been expressed by citizens, planning commission members, county commission members, and staff regarding the design and execution of recent conservation subdivisions. Among the chief concerns highlighted in these discussions is that many, that in many recent cases, building lots within new conservation subdivisions have been located in relatively close proximity to adjoining properties and/or existing county roads. It was felt that this outcome is inconsistent with the general intent of conservation subdivisions to internalize building lots. During these discussions, staff outlined a potential change to the zoning ordinance that would address this concern by increasing the required distance that proposed building lots within a conservation subdivision must be set back from adjoining properties and existing county roads. Following discussion at the July meeting, staff was asked to draft an official amendment to the zoning ordinance that would affect this change. That text amendment is included as attachment 22-1. Staff recommends approval of this text amendment. Staff also recommends that the attached resolution be forwarded to the county commission for adoption.
Discussion? Keith?
Yeah, I've got one question. On, I guess it's the second page of it. It says, "Open Space Residential Subdivisions of any type shall be no less than 10,000 square feet in size." I know a lot of these subdivisions are using little pocket parks within them where they have just a little player and, or a few trees left and stuff of this nature. And it looks fairly attractive. Will this cut that sort of stuff out?
Well, that's a quarter of an acre. Can you put a pocket park on a quarter of an acre?
There's a lot of them around in subdivisions.
Well, then, I guess that will encourage you then.
Just to be clear, if I may, Mr. Chairman, that provision that Mr. Mosley is referencing, that's an existing provision. That's not being proposed to change in any way. Having said that, the way we apply this is that if an area is to satisfy open space requirements, it has to meet this. That doesn't prevent someone from including smaller portions of open space that are in addition to the 50% that's typically required. So, it hasn't become an issue thus far. Yeah, thanks.
We, while y'all are thinking, have been talking for, since I was a small child, about internalizing these conservation subdivisions. And in discussion with staff this evening, I have written what would be an opening paragraph to each of these sections that we are amending, which is Section E and Section F. I don't know that it will accomplish our objective, but I'm going to try it this way, for lack of something better. And the amendment to the existing ordinance we have here would read, "The developer shall be required to internalize to the maximum extent practicable all proposed lots and supporting infrastructure. But at a minimum, the following shall apply." Then it goes into the setbacks. Staff currently has no authority to require that. And I'm, this is kind of broad and I understand that. But at least gives them some leverage to say, hey, guys, you can do a better job than this and send it back. And I think that's the most, at least I think it's the most we can hope to gain at this time. Anybody got any thoughts on it? I will read it again. Did it make sense? I don't see any heads going any way here. Did it make sense? Don? All right, let me read it again, make sure we're clear. "The developer shall be required to internalize to the maximum extent practicable all proposed lots and supporting infrastructure, which includes sewage treatment, sewage disposal, et cetera." That doesn't say that here, but, "But at a minimum, the following shall apply." Then we go into paragraph E and paragraph D. Anybody object to that?
Be rewritten for us to vote on it?
I asked counsel. She said we could amend from the floor tonight and it would still get to county commission. Is that correct?
That's correct. You can amend it on the floor. The county commission cannot. They'd have to send it back to you if they made any changes. But since it's coming from here to them, it would be presented to them in this form. And then, Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, did anyone sign up for the public hearing?
No. We don't have any more public hearing signees at all.
I just wanted to open and, for you to open and close it on the record, please.
I need to do that?
Just note that no one signed up, like you just did.
Thank you. We'll open for public hearing now. Since no one signed up, we'll close the floor for public hearing.
Thank you.
For the record, counsel. Any other thoughts? Is there a second? Was that you, Brian?
Yes.
I didn't, we didn't have your mic on, buddy. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll vote now. We'll vote now. Record it. Holly, motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item 23, excuse me, amendment to Article 20 of the Williamson County zoning ordinance regarding setbacks for, excuse me, non-traditional wastewater disposal systems. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Article 20 of the zoning ordinance outlines the distances that various components of non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal systems must be set back from adjoining properties. Currently, this distance is only 25 feet for wastewater disposal systems, which dispose of treated wastewater by applying the effluent to the soil via drip emitters or spray nozzles. At the July 2018 meeting, the planning commission directed staff to prepare a text amendment that would increase this setback from 25 feet to 100 feet. This text amendment is included as attachment 23-1. Staff recommends approval of the attached text amendment. Staff also recommends that the attached resolution be forwarded to the county commission for adoption.
Discussion? We've had this discussion too many times. And forwarded to the county. Second? Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? I see none. Prepare to vote. Vote now. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item 24 is withdrawn. We move from public hearings to non-residential site plan. Agenda item 25, non-residential site plan review revised for Troubadour Club formerly Hideaway at Arrington, amenity center on 80.12 acres located off of Clubview Lane in the 5th voting district. Staff?
A site plan for this golf course and amenity area was originally approved at the May 2008 meeting. Since that time, the golf course has been constructed and portions of the amenity area were built. The development is now under new ownership and the applicant is requesting approval of a revised site plan for the golf course and amenity area. Changes from the previously approved site plan primarily involve reconfiguring the amenity area buildings such as the golf house, clubhouse, fitness center, pool house, et cetera, and associated parking in the center of the development. Staff recommends approval of the revised site plan with the following conditions. One, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. Two, the posting of a performance bond in the amount of $5,100 for landscaping improvements. And three, all proposed signage must be approved per ordinance requirements.
Thank you, sir. Questions? Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item 26, non-residential site plan for McDaniel Estates amenity center on 3.76 acres located off McDaniel Road in the 5th voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting approval of the amenity center for McDaniel Estates, which will contain the pool area, walking trails, and the pedestrian bridge spanning the Harpeth River. The applicant has requested deferral on this item until the September 2018 meeting. Staff concurs with this request.
Thank you, sir. Motion to defer. Motion made in second. No further discussion. Vote now. Motion carries. Thank you. Preliminary plat, agenda item 27, preliminary plat review revised for McDaniel Estates subdivision. Phase Two containing 45 lots on 16.65 acres located off McDaniel Road in the 5th voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A preliminary plat for this phase of the development was approved at the December 2017 meeting. The applicant is now requesting revised preliminary plat approval in order to expand the phase's boundaries and increase the lot count from 38 to 45 and delineate and create access for a cemetery that is located on the property. This phase contains approximately three acres of open space and the cemetery is located within this open space. Required roadway improvements recommended by the county's traffic consultant are to be completed prior to the submittal of the final plat containing the 87th lot. With the inclusion of this preliminary plat, which contains 45 lots, a total of 86 lots have been or will be platted and therefore, off-site roadway improvements are not required in conjunction with this phase. The preliminary plat is largely consistent in layout, with that depicted on the approved concept plan. Staff recommends approval of the revised preliminary plat with the following conditions, which shall be addressed in conjunction with final plat consideration. Number one, prior to final plat's submittal for the first section of the proposed subdivision, the zoning certificate must be obtained for the completed treatment and disposal system. Prior to issuance of the zoning certificate, the applicant shall provide the following. A, a letter from TDEC indicating that said system to serve this development was installed and is functioning. B, as-built drawings showing the location of all system components and a sealed certification letter from the design engineer indicating that said system to serve the development was constructed in accordance with the approved construction plans and specifications. C, a letter from the owner slash utility provider indicating that it has accepted said system to serve this development and is currently operating same. And D, the posting of a performance bond in the amount of $4,125 for landscaping improvements. Number two, prior to consideration of final plat approval, the applicant shall submit HOA documents for review and approval by the county attorney's office. The HOA documents must be submitted with the final plat and the approved HOA documents must be recorded concurrently with the recording of the final plat. Number three, prior to submittal of the final plat containing the 87th lot, all off-site improvements as specified in the traffic impact analysis review letter from the county's traffic consultant must be completed in accordance with the approved plans. The developer shall be responsible for acquiring any additional rights of way and/or construction easements in order to complete the required improvements. Four, establishment of a performance bond for roads, drainage, and erosion control. Five, establishment of a performance bond for water improvements in favor of Millcroft and Utility District. Six, establishment of a performance bond for the wastewater collection system. Seven, submission of landscaping plans and establishment of a performance bond for landscaping. Eight, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And nine, submission of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordinance System prior to signature and recording of the plat.
Thank you, Aaron. Questions of staff? Don?
Sir, I just have a question for staff. What is a minimum density allowed in a subdivision this time?
This is in the RD1 district and it, and I don't know the overall density for the entire development, but it's less than one unit per acre. I'm thinking it was .66 units per acre was the overall density for the entire development.
Any other questions? Comments? Motion?
What was the?
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Continuing under final plats, agenda item 28, final plat review for Spring Grove Large Lot Easement Subdivision containing three lots on 20.16 acres located off of Arno Alisona Road located in the 2nd voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject property is approximately 25 acres in size and is located off Arno Alisona Road, approximately one-half mile south of Hatcher Lane. The applicant is requesting approval of a large lot easement subdivision in order to create three lots off an existing 50-foot ingress/egress utilities easement. As revised plans were not submitted in a timely manner, staff recommends that action on this item be deferred until the September 2018 meeting.
Motion to defer. I heard two motions in three seconds. Without further discussion, prepare to vote. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item 29, final plat review revised for St. James Large Lot Easement Subdivision containing nine lots on 69.47 acres located off painful Arno Road located in the 2nd voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A final plat for this development was approved at the March 2018 meeting. The applicant is now requesting approval of a revised final plat. The changes from the previously approved final plat are minor, consisting of changes to the configuration of the easement and corresponding changes to building envelopes. The applicant is still proposing individual septic systems for the lots and the Williamson County Department of Sewer Disposal Management has approved the revised request. The plat is in order and staff recommends approval, subject to driveway and drainage infrastructure being complete prior to issuance of building permits.
Thank you, sir. Questions of staff? Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item 29 was on consent agenda, excuse me. I get it right in a minute. Agenda item 30 was on consent. Agenda item 31, continuing under final plats, final plat review revised for Daventry subdivision. Section 1 containing 14 lots on 52.09 acres located off Tullis Road in the 5th voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A revised preliminary plat for this section was approved in June of 2018. The applicant is now requesting approval for Section 1 of the development, which contains 14 lots and approximately 33 acres of open space. Final plat is consistent in layout with the approved revised preliminary plat. Plat is in order and staff recommends approval with the following stipulations. Number one, the approved HOA documents shall be concurrently recorded with the recording of the final plat. Number two, posting of a performance bond in the amount of $396,000 for roads, drainage, and erosion control. Number three, posting of a performance bond in the amount of $488,000 for water improvements as specified by Millcroft and Utility District. Number four, posting of a performance bond in the amount of $48,000 for the wastewater collection system. Number five, posting of a performance bond in the amount of $81,510 for landscaping improvements. Number six, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And number seven, that the applicant provide two copies of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordinance System prior to signature and recording of the plat.
Thank you, sir. Questions of staff? Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item 32 is also on consent. We have our non-agenda item. Joe?
I'll defer to Mike.
Mikey?
Yeah, just real quick. Joe did a good job at the opening of explaining what this is. This is a resolution simply seeking an additional $30,000 to augment the fiscal analysis component of the comprehensive plan update. And so we're asking you to recommend this resolution to the county commission for their consideration at the September meeting.
It's a voice vote. Okay. Discussion? We need a voice vote. It's not on the machine. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed no. The motion carries. Thank you. We will now entertain a motion to adjourn. We are out of here. Thank you.
All right.